Good evening. Welcome to the General Board Meeting of the Livonia Public Schools Board of Education, February 8th, 2016. We have six of our board members present tonight. We have a seventh who's on her way very shortly, but we're going to go ahead and get started. Mr. Centers, would you please take the role for us, please?
Sure. Ms. Bonnefield is running a bit late. Mr. Centers is here. Ms. Jarvis.
Here.
Mr. Johnson.
Here.
Ms. Laura.
Here.
Mrs. McDonald.
Here.
President Burton.
Here.
We have a call.
Thank you. Mr. Centers, will you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening. We have a full agenda and a packed house tonight. It's always nice to see that you folks have found this as a fun activity on a cold winter day. If you would like an agenda and you have not gotten one yet, they can be found just outside the door on the table. If you're watching from home, you can follow along with our agenda online also, and that can be found at www.livoniapublicschools.org on our website. If you can hover over the Board tab, you can drop down to Agendas and follow right along. This is a regular, or what some folks refer to as a voting meeting. What that means is the items that have come before the Board at this time have been through typically at least two other meetings where we have discussed them and frankly beat them up quite a bit before we've gotten to this point. So you may or may not see the level of discussion that you might expect before we vote on an item. Please understand that that's because it has been discussed in great detail, at least twice before we come to it tonight. If you are interested in more discussion on Board items, I strongly encourage you to either attend or watch from home the Committee of the Whole Meetings, and that schedule is also found on our website. That is where we'd have a lot of discussion on Board items. We at times send them back to Administration to ask for more information. There's a lot of discussion and back and forth on those things before they get ready to come to a meeting like tonight's. We will also be going through several celebratory activities this evening. We will be hearing from our Franklin Arts students. We have a Golden Apple Award. We have a Team Effort Award, and we have a very generous gift to the district. So there's a lot of celebrations to be had this evening. We will also be taking a break after some of these more celebratory activities. So if you're following along on an agenda, after Item 3E, we will be taking a break for about five to 10 minutes or so, so those in the audience can congratulate our honorees of the evening. Our parents always taught us that it's rude to get up and walk out of a meeting. In this case, it's not so rude. You are more than welcome to stay till the end of the meeting. We have lots of stuff that a lot of us find fascinating, but the general public doesn't always agree. If you'd like to leave after our break period, you can feel free to do so. Again, you are always welcome to stay till the end of the meeting and follow along that way also. The last item, just as informational purposes, the last item of our meeting tonight will be to go into a closed session for our mid-year superintendence evaluation. That is a typical and normal thing that we do at this time of the year. We will be going off-air at that point, and we will not be coming back on-air because we don't report out after that. We report out on our superintendent's evaluation at the end of the year in June, as opposed to at the mid-year point. So if you're watching from home, when we break for the superintendent's evaluation, we will not be returning at that time. Let's see here. The next item on our agenda is Item 3, Communications, and I will turn it over to Mrs. Jenkins, who will take us through several activities this evening.
Yes, several. Thank you. Good evening, President Burton, members of the Board, Superintendent Oquist. Tonight, we are continuing on with our Student Art Gallery program, tonight featuring the works of Emerson Middle School. As you can see on the board behind you, and also on the ceramic works on the board table in front of you, we have several wonderful pieces on display this month. The student artists were selected by their art teacher, Mr. McMillan. We also have two pieces that are being carried over from last month by Stevenson High School's Sarah Dressing. Those are the two pencil drawings on the lower left. Her pieces didn't quite make it here on time, if you recall, last month, to be included for the public to see during our meeting, so we wanted to make sure to carry those over as well, so that they're included tonight. Sarah did receive her certificate last month, so tonight I'm pleased to introduce you with our Emerson artists. Each will receive a certificate which reads "Livonia Public Schools Certificate of Recognition, Student Art Gallery, Featured Artist, Selected to Represent the Emerson Middle School Art Department at the Board of Education Office, February 8th, 2016." Okay, and without further ado, I'd like to introduce you to our artists from Emerson Middle School. First, we have Alexis Boplan. Alexis is an eighth grader, and I'm not sure that I saw Alexis. Is Alexis here? There she is, way in the back.
And for the family members of those who are receiving awards, if you would like to move to a more convenient spot to take a photograph, you can feel free to do so.
And we'll take a group picture at the break as well. Okay. And there you go, Alexis. And which piece, which piece are yours? Oh, the one in the middle? Is that ceramic?
Yeah.
It's very heavy.
Yeah.
Very awesome. Okay, thank you. Congratulations. Next, we have Mackenzie Marsh, and Mackenzie is a seventh grader. Hi, Mackenzie. There you go. And which pieces are yours?
A pig and the texture drawing on the top right corner.
Top right corner, okay.
And shoes behind.
Okay, excellent. Excellent, thank you. Congratulations. Next, we have Madison Reynolds, who is also an eighth grader. Madison? There you go. And which piece are yours?
Mine is the one on the top left and the one on the bottom center.
Bottom center. So the bottom center is a painting, and the top left is a colored pencil?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Congratulations. Next, we have Kalia Watson, who is an eighth grader. There you go, Kalia. And which pieces are yours?
The ceramic one with the sun on it.
Okay.
And the stippling back there.
Okay. Oh, right in the middle there. Okay, very nice. Thank you so much. And last but not least, Maya Zimmerman. And Maya is an eighth grader. There you go, Maya. Which pieces are yours?
The one on the bottom right.
Okay, excellent. Thank you so much. Congratulations. And that is it for this presentation. Thank you again to all of our students and to Mr. McMillan for allowing our Emerson students to share their works with us. They'll be here at the Board Office throughout the month, so thank you very much.
Thank you so much. And as we've said before, we have our art students here. It is a talent that many of us do not have. I certainly don't have it, so I'm amazed, and I thank you guys for sharing your artwork with us. It beats the heck out of looking at a blank beige wall, so we appreciate it, and we really appreciate your talents.
Thank you.
The next item on our agenda is Item 3B, the Golden Apple Award. Mrs. Jenkins.
Okay, thank you, President Burton. Not only do we love to recognize our students' achievements and talents, we also love to have the opportunity to recognize our amazing staff here in LPS. The school district established the Golden Apple Award program several years ago as a way of doing just that, to recognize our staff members and our school volunteers who go above and beyond for our students, our schools, and our community, and they do so with a kind spirit and with genuine care. We're so fortunate in our school district to be able to say that we have amassed an entire orchard of golden apples through the years, and it's my pleasure to introduce you to our latest pick.
Can you tell him the writer?
Yes, yeah. At this time, I would love to ask Mrs. Lori McGulick to join me at the podium. Before we present her with this award, it's necessary for me to take a few moments to brag about Lori's work as a paraprofessional at Franklin High School. Okay, you ready, Lori?
I am.
Okay. Lori has been working at Franklin High School since September 1994. She's a parapro, so she works with students who need additional assistance throughout the day. Through the years, she has worked building control, managed the planning room, supported the general education teachers when there are significant numbers of special education students in the class, and currently Lori works one-on-one with a student who has disabilities. But it's important to note, Lori is defined by the way in which she does her job. In the nomination, which was submitted by 10 of her colleagues, there is a common thread of descriptive words such as positive, caring, amazing kindness, compassion, role model, patient, calming force, and genuine concern. She is described as a constant in the building, a person who gives 110% every day. She is someone who does not wait to be told what to do. She seeks out opportunities to assist and does so in a humble manner. Colleague Anne Marie Tracy noted this in the nomination. "A big reason that Franklin is considered a caring place is because of Lori. We are all better people because she is in our lives." Assistant Principal Andrew Pace has had this to say about Lori. "I am so amazed at how Lori always has such a warm smile on her face. She takes time out of her day to say hello and hear how things are going. She stays so positive with each student and works so well..." She works with as well, with the students that you work with. "In addition to her normal responsibilities, Lori has provided tutoring services at the summer school program, and in many cases has provided the support that students needed in order to achieve enough credits to graduate." Colleague Lisa Wilson said, "She welcomes and accepts every student regardless of ability or attitude." Franklin Principal Dan Willenborg offers the highest praise to Lori McGulick," and you'll pick up on another pun here. "She is a beam of optimism and kindness at Franklin High School. She treats every student and every staff member in a manner that suggests that they are the most important person in her world. She epitomizes the concept of giving and caring nature and has earned the reputation as Franklin's very own Mother Teresa." That is some high praise, if I must say. And on that note, I would love to invite Board Secretary Tammy Bonnefield to join us at the podium, and Tammy will be presenting the Golden Apple Award to Mrs. McGulick.
We appreciate that so much. This is your award, and can I say a couple things? So I also have some comments from her colleagues. Lori is always positive. She always has a smile on her face, and is always quick to lend a helping hand. Lori truly exemplifies what it means to be a Franklin patriot. She is positive of Livonia Public Schools and is a role model. She builds successful relationships with staff and students at Franklin High School. Lori provides a consistent professional and caring presence for the students. And I love this one the most. She has unwavering patience with her students. As parents, we all know that that's really a tough thing to do.
Thank you. Thank you very much. And there's also a Golden Apple pin on the back here as well. Okay, did you want to say a few words?
Could I, please?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, thank you, Mrs. Jenkins, Ms. Bonnefield, for the introduction, for the beautiful award that I was just presented. I would like to thank the Board of Education, our superintendent, and the Livonia Public School District for the opportunity that I've been given to be employed in this wonderful district. I have been blessed to be a part of this community. We've raised three fantastic children in this outstanding district, and I've been employed by this district. I feel as though I've won the trifecta. I would like to thank Mr. Dan Willenborg, the principal at Franklin High School. He, as you enter the Franklin High School building, you can feel that sense of positivity and the caring and nurturing that is in that building, and I'm a firm believer that in an environment of a building, that it starts at the top, and that feeling, that palpable in this trickles down through the structure of the building, and I'm so grateful to him and all of our outstanding administrators in that building. I would also like to thank Lisa Wilson and those of the other members of the Franklin family, who not only initiated my nomination but wrote beautiful things about me. They've touched me deeply, and if it weren't for them, this wouldn't have culminated in this reality for me. I would like to thank all of Franklin High School for the support they've shown me over the past 22 years, for the wisdom that they've shared with me, the knowledge they have, for all of the compassion they've shown me during some challenging times, the happiness that they have shared with me on a daily basis. I'm grateful to them for all of that. I would like to thank the members of the Franklin family who are here tonight and my friends who are here tonight. Their support is tremendous, and I appreciate them taking the time out of their evening to be here, but more importantly, I appreciate them being a part of my life and them allowing me to be a part of their lives. If I could take that golden apple and cut it into a multitude of slices, all of the people that have touched my life and have granted me the success that I have, I would do it. However, the core of that apple, the strength, comes from my family. My husband, John, my daughter, Heather, my soon-to-be son-in-law, Justin, my daughter, Mindy, my son, John, and daughter-in-law, Jennifer, couldn't be here tonight. They're at a board meeting of their school district. My sister-in-law, brother-in-law, and nephew, Eileen, Doug, and Daniel. They're my rock. I thank you for your love and support, your guidance, your patience with me, your encouragement, the joy you fill me with daily. I love you very much. So once again, I thank all of you for this opportunity. This is the pinnacle of my career. Thank you.
They meant as much to those of the rest of us who work with and for and in our school district as I think they meant to you. The next item on our agenda, Mrs. Jenkins, is Item 3C, Team Effort Award.
Okay, thank you, President Burton. Your next presentation is also very cool. "What happens when you mix curious young minds with seasoned experience and add a large dose of passion for creative, for creating, for innovating, and for lighting a spark in students, sparks that could turn into fulfilling careers and untold contributions to the world? The result is a partnership between educators and business professionals that is creating opportunities for many LPS students who are interested in the industrial arts." Tonight, we would like to recognize four people in particular who have gone way above and beyond to support our middle school industrial arts programs by presenting them with the Team Effort Award. A Team Effort Award, the Team Effort Award was created to recognize the outstanding groups of individuals who, through teamwork, have made exceptional contributions to our schools. The group of individuals we are recognizing tonight has given generously of their time and talents by serving as consultants to our shop teachers and have even invited them and have even invited our teachers into their facilities to check out the latest in manufacturing processes. This Team Effort Award nomination was submitted by seven industrial education teachers, and I hope I am getting all of their names correct. Kim Douciblant, Dan Green, Jeff Hatley, Bob Ho, Dave Resser, Jim Roman, and Mike Stewart, in addition to Emerson Middle School's principal, Ann Owen. Now, without further ado, I'd like to call our honorees to the podium to present them with the certificate. I am all about the certificates tonight. This certificate reads, "Livonia Public Schools Team Effort Award is presented to," we have four different honorees, "for outstanding involvement and collaborative effort to enhance Livonia Public Schools' industrial education programs." Okay, so first up, in alphabetical order, we have Mr. Chuck Dartis, who is, and join me as I call your name, please. Thank you. Mr. Dartis is the president and COO of Alpha USA, which is a manufacturing business here in Livonia. There you are, Chuck. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Next, we have Mr. Gene Kaiser, who is a manufacturing instructor at Schoolcraft College. Next, we have Mr. David Lawrence, who is Chief Analytics Officer at Alpha USA. And we have Mr. Dan West, who is the president and CEO of the Livonia Chamber of Commerce. An old friend of mine. In addition to these certificates, he had a special request, from whom I will remain nameless, but each person will also get a little pin, a Golden Apple pin, to represent our school district, to remind them on a daily basis of LPS. So I'd like to give those as well.
Thank you very much.
There you go. And stick around, because I have more to say, so if you can. Aside from offering the very exciting Young Innovators Challenge for the past two years, giving hundreds of middle school students the opportunity to stretch their creativity and compete for top spots with their inventions, each member of this group has contributed in his own way, and I'd like to read just a bit about which each individual has done. Are you still with me?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, this is strange. You're behind me.
It's the states.
Okay. Okay. Chuck Dartis has provided a loud rally call that industrial education programs matter and must be nurtured. He sees the need for educators and business people to sit down and learn each other's cultures in order to best prepare students for a successful future in a strong community. He gives his time and energy tirelessly in the pursuit of educational opportunity and equality for all students. Mr. Gene Kaiser has opened doors for LPS staff to see the facilities and programs at Schoolcraft College that are preparing students for high-paying manufacturing jobs that are in demand. David Lawrence is working with Automation Alley in the area of grant writing to further improve our curriculum offerings. He has also given his time and technical expertise as we rework and remodel our existing classroom spaces at Emerson Middle School, actually in all of the middle schools, I'm pretty sure. Dan West has rallied the Livonia Chamber of Commerce and the I-275 Industrial Council to look at ways to support schools and students to best meet the growing job market opportunities. He has arranged for speakers and financial assistants to augment the secondary industrial arts programs, which equates to $1,000 annually for three years to each middle school for consumable materials such as lumber, nails, glue, paint, and more. And now I'd like to invite Emerson Middle School Industrial Arts teacher, Dan Green, to the podium to say a few words about these gentlemen and the work that they're doing with our district. Dan?
Thanks, Ms. Jenkins. Appreciate it. Ladies and gentlemen of the School Board, Superintendent Oquist, Central Office Administration, community members, and guests, it's really my honor to get to stand up here before you today and just say a little bit about what these four gentlemen have done and what it means to us within the school building, so it's really a privilege to speak towards that end tonight. This is my 20th year with Livonia Public Schools. However, it's my first year at Emerson Middle School, and making a transition for any teacher at grade level or subject, or you add into that a building change, can be apprehensive at best sometimes. However, this last 20 weeks of my career has probably been some of the most encouraging of my career. I've seen administration and school leadership invest in staff and students in creative ways and with great enthusiasm. I've seen school and community leaders and members come together and partner to create new opportunities for STEM education and project-based hands-on learning within our middle school classrooms. Some of the best examples of these activities are the Manufacturing Day Field Trip, the Young Inventors Competition Kickoff event that was held at each and every middle school building, and most recently, the Young Inventors Banquet hosted at Schoolcraft College at the Vista Tech Center. In addition to these events, a significant financial investment has been made into our infrastructure and programs, and you'll hear a little bit more, I think, about that later on in this evening. These four gentlemen have shown real leadership and personal commitment to these goals by making opportunities for our students to succeed and never expecting acknowledgement or fanfare for themselves. Students have begun to dream and hope with renewed excitement about what they can achieve in school and after. Jeff Kennedy, a great leader, always said it this way. "Real leadership on any type of team is to find ways for everyone to contribute their individual talents and then set them up for the success." The synergy of these four men has gone far beyond their individual talents, which is what makes them excellent candidates for the Team Effort Award. So tonight, on behalf of all of our Emerson, Holmes, and Frost students and parents, as well as myself and the other middle school staff, we would like to say a big thank you for believing and investing in us and our students. Appreciate it, guys.
Members of the Board, Superintendent Oquist, and then particularly also Ann Owen as well, principal at Emerson, we're grateful for this honor, and more importantly, we're grateful that you have joined the team with us in addressing such an important need. It's, for the last four or five years, we represent a group of business leaders in the community that have realized that there's this weird dichotomy out there. We have college-age folks and graduates that can't find career-oriented jobs. We have a bunch of professional manufacturers that can't find skilled people to work in their facilities. Why is that? And we're trying to bridge that together through better education of where career opportunities are at, and that's really what this is all about, and it starts with a great education/business partnership, and that's really what this is all about. And we made some headway with the middle schools because we believe that's the age group where young people start to form their career interests, and we want skilled and technical trades to be on their mindset because frankly, that's where the high demand of jobs are now and in the near future. So if we hopefully played a little role in helping more young people realize good careers, good opportunities, and for the parents out there, careers right here in their own backyard in the skilled and technical trade. So we're humbled and grateful for this honor, and we look forward to more and exciting opportunities in the future. Thank you, folks.
I'll be very brief, like I normally am. I would like to thank the School Board for hiring such outstanding teachers, principals that have passions not only for their students, but they care about their livelihood down the road. They care about their community just as we do. Thank you very much.
Can we sit down now?
Thank you so much. Livonia truly is a very blessed community to have the number of staff and parents, and as this is a prime example of community members who are willing to work together to make this really a terrific place for kids to be educated. The next item on our agenda is Item 3D, Gifts to Emerson Middle School. May I have a motion, please?
President Burton.
Mrs. Bonnefield.
Move that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public School School District accept the generous donation of 30 Toshiba laptop computers, two 3D printers, 35 draft the generous donation of 30 Toshiba laptop computers, two 3D printers, 35 drafting tabletops, 18 computer tabletops, 60 rolling office chairs, and supplies such as paint, casters, et cetera, for a total value of $21,974.53 from the following individuals and businesses. You guys ready? Christine Strumbos family, Nicholas Strumbos family, Alpha USA and employees, Lavonia AM Rotary, Lavonia Chamber of Commerce, Lavonia Kids and Family, NYX, ZF, TRW, Schoolcraft College, Madonna College, Nicholas Motorsport, Mayor Dennis Wright, I'm only halfway through, Pat and Jack Kirksey, former mayor, Dan West, Gene Keiz, Jay Groen Dyke, Shelley McMahon, Bill Joyner, Quality Metal Craft, UPS Store Number 3011, which is Eric Ladwig, Dozer Cycle, IME, and Local 174 UAW.
We have a motion by Mrs. Bonfield, supported by Mrs. Laura. We have a motion by Mrs. Bonfield, supported by Mrs. Laura. Mrs. Jenkins, would you like to address this item also? Just a little bit more, because most of what I had to say is exactly reading the list of the items and the donors, so I won't repeat all of that. But along the same lines as our previous item, we couldn't offer our students as many wonderful opportunities without our community and our business partners. Our district is so fortunate to have the generous support of the businesses, individuals, civic organizations, and volunteers. Tonight, you have a motion before you to formally accept the very generous donation that totals $21,974.53 to Emerson Middle School. I'll read the list of items one more time, and then I'll say just a little bit about how they'll be used. The items included in this donation are 30 Toshiba laptop computers, two 3D printers, 35 drafting tabletops, 18 computer tabletops, 60 rolling office chairs, and supplies such as paint, casters, and more. These items will be used to improve the curriculum and the student experience in drafting and robotics at Emerson Middle School. The furnishings will allow for more flexibility in seating and in the layout of the classroom during instruction time and group work. Thank you so much. Other questions or comments from the Board? Mrs. Oquist?
When you're done.
Okay. Mrs. Jarvis?
Thank you, President Burton. I can't say enough about how wonderful it is when a school district and the business community work together. It's the ultimate win-win, and everyone benefits. Because of the involvement in our community, we are developing into a STEM district, and it's exciting to see. We have opportunities for our students to learn manufacturing and to learn programming and robotics, starting at the elementary, upper elementary level, middle school, and high school. We could not do this without the involvement of our community and our business community especially. Thank you.
Other questions or comments from other members of the Board? Mrs. Bonfield?
I would just like to, first of all, obviously thank everyone on this list. But I think a lot of this stems from Ann Owens and her commitment to her kids and going and being part of the community and hooking up with the people that are going to make a difference. She is an outstanding leader, and I know her team stands behind her. And I just, I can't say enough about how much she cares about the kids and understands and really wants to set her children up for success. And I think the more choices that we give the kids to see and enjoy what they can do in the future, the more we're going to set them up for success. And this is just a great opportunity and a great commitment from the community, and it shows what we can do when we all pull together.
Thank you. Comments from other members of the Board? Mrs. Oquist, would you like to?
Just a quick note, we've had such tremendous recognition, I just wanted to make a special note of this corporate partnership dream team we have here tonight in the Team Effort Award. I've had the distinct pleasure of getting to know each of you over the past six months or so with our work on the Chamber Board or through other projects in the district, and we are tremendously grateful. This really just scratched the surface of the things that you are doing, the partnership that you have with our school leadership, and that you are working to make an investment in the children entrusted to us. So we are very, very grateful, and we are so proud to have you as our community partners. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from Board members? All right. We have a motion on the table by Mrs. Bonfield, supported by Mrs. Laura. Mrs. Bonfield, would you please take the role?
Mrs. Bonfield says yes. Mrs. Laura?
Says yes.
Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mrs. McDonald?
Yes.
President Burton?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you so much, and thank you again for your generosity. Sincerely appreciated. The next item on our agenda, and then we will take a break after this item, is Item 3E: Principal's Week Resolution. May I have a motion, please?
President Burton.
Mr. Centers?
Move that the Board of Education of the Lavonia Public Schools School District adopt the attached resolution establishing the week of February 7th through 13th, 2016, as Principal's Week in Lavonia Public Schools.
Support. We have a motion by Mr. Centers, supported by Mrs. McDonald. And Mrs. Jenkins, would you like to address this item for us? Okay, thank you, President Burton. Tonight, we'd like to draw, sorry, take a few minutes, moments to recognize the people who keep everything together at our schools, our principals. They're the first to arrive in the morning and the last to leave in the evening. They're there to handle any situation that may arise throughout the school day. They can be found walking our hallways, connecting with students, rallying our school spirit, cheering our teams, calming a nervous youngster, applauding a performance, or just offering a listening ear. Their schools are truly theirs. They take ownership and help create a culture of high standards, mutual respect, and so much more. Each year, our district designates an official week to recognize their efforts. At this time, I'd like to ask Trustee Dan Centers to join me at the podium to present a resolution to Ann Owen and Keith McDonald, who are co-presidents to the Lavonia Educational Administrators Group, also known as LEEDs. Would you want to read it from here? Or?
Oh, you have a copy. Okay.
Whereas, Principal's Week is dedicated to recognizing the significant contributions of Lavonia Public Schools' principals and their commitment to providing quality educational experiences and guidance for their students, and whereas energetic and inspiring school leadership is essential if schools, teachers, and support staff are to implement college and career-ready standards and assessments, and whereas school principals play a vital role in the success of students and act as a liaison between the school and the community it serves, and whereas we join with educators, parents, and students to raise awareness of the importance of educational leadership. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the trustees of the Lavonia Public Schools Board of Education recognize the week of January 7th through 13th, 2016, as School Principals Week, and encourage all citizens to thank and support the efforts of school principals in our community.
I just want to note that as looking at the dates that are presented there, that we are one day shy of falling on Valentine's Day for Principal's Week, and I think that's only fitting because I would say, when I sit in a room with all of my elementary, secondary, special services colleagues, is the one thing that stands out for me is represented by Valentine's Day, and that is heart. I am always humbled when I sit in a room of what I call the dynamic creativity and energy of all of my colleagues that have chosen Keith and myself to represent them. And it's just amazing to me, so many of those folks think creatively, out of the box, and they look to provide an environment in the school hours where they are with students that would be what they want to provide for their own personal children. And it's amazing to me that we can diversify and offer so much for such a broad spectrum of students, and we are very grateful to have that opportunity as administrators to get to come into that exciting, energetic environment every single day. So thank you.
Thank you. So if you're at your schools this week, make sure you give your principals a high-five or handshake just to thank them personally for all that they do. Are there any questions or comments from the Board of Education? Mrs. Bonfield?
I think Mrs. Owens wrapped it up at one of her little stutters when she said, "Our kids," and then she stopped and said, "our personal children," that she has to make that differentiation because I think all the principals feel like the kids in their buildings are their kids, and I think that just really sums up what our principals do for us.
Any other comments from the Board? Mrs. Oquist?
I know it's surprising to you that I'd want to add a few words about our building leaders.
I knew you would.
I think so highly of our school principals, and just a quick note, in reading recently about the impact of school leaders, I read a quote that said, "Great schools do not exist apart from great leaders." We are so fortunate in Lavonia to have building principals, assistant principals, athletic directors, and all of our school leaders as folks who are so dedicated and committed to the children that they serve, to the colleagues with whom they work, advocates for their staff, and build a true sense of community amongst the parents and the business partners. We are so fortunate. It is a very multifaceted and complex role. I also think it's one of the most wonderful jobs that exists. I loved my time as a principal, and I am truly grateful for the tireless efforts of all of our principals in Lavonia Public Schools, so thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from the Board? Seeing none, we have a motion by Mr. Centers, supported by Mrs. McDonald. Mrs. Bonfield, would you please take the role?
Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mrs. McDonald?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mrs. Laura?
Yes.
Mrs. Bonfield says yes. President Burton?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. It's been a wonderful beginning to this meeting, where you've been able to celebrate our students, our staff members, our administrators, and our community members. I don't remember a more well-rounded celebration at the beginning of a monthly board meeting, and it's warmed my heart, I know. We are going to take about a five-to-10-minute break, as I mentioned earlier, so we can congratulate our honorees, and after that, we'll continue on with the rest of our business of our evening. We are at recess right now. Good evening. Welcome to the continuation of the Lavonia Public Schools Board of Education Regular Meeting of February 8th, 2016. Next item on our agenda is Item 3F: Written Communications. Do any Board members have any written communications they would like to share with the Board? Seeing none, we are on to Item 3G: Audience Communications. Audience Communications is a period of time that the Board sets aside to listen to members of our community. We do ask that folks honor our three-minute time limit, and that is so that we can be fair to everyone and make sure that everybody is heard. We do have a timer that will go off. It's just a little bit more polite way than my having to interrupt anybody in case they do hit over that three-minute limit, so if you do hear a beep, if you could wrap up your comments, that would be appreciated. It's been requested over the last few months that we remind folks what the role of the Board of Education is and what kind of response they may expect from their communications. As we said, this is a time for the Board to listen to the public. It is not a question-and-answer time. However, you will receive a response back. Very frequently, your response will come from the superintendent or a member of administration, and that is for the following reason. The Board of Education has three roles and areas of responsibility. Those roles are to set policy for our district, to set the long-term goals and match that budget to our goals, and to hire and evaluate our superintendent. Those are strictly the roles of the Board of Education. All of the day-to-day operations fall under the responsibility of the superintendent and our administrative and staff team. So therefore, if your item or your concern pertains to more of a day-to-day operations issue, you may receive a response back from our superintendent as opposed to our Board of Education. I do have two blue slips. If anybody else would like to participate in audience communication, if you could hand me a blue slip, I'll make sure that your name gets called. The first blue slip that I have is from Dan Cosgrove. Dan?
Good evening. Thank you for letting me talk.
You're very welcome.
Tonight, I am honored to be reading on behalf of my colleague, Lisa Lee, at Stevenson High School. Good evening, President Burton, members of the Board, and Superintendent Oquist. My name is Lisa Lee, and I currently teach at Stevenson High School. This is my seventh year teaching for Lavonia Public Schools. I was thrilled to be hired by LPS. Not only did I know it was a great school district by word of mouth, but I also graduated from Stevenson High School in 2002. Now, I'm raising my own family in Lavonia. My daughter will begin her first year at Cass Elementary in the fall, and I have no doubts that an amazing staff will greet her this year and the 12 that will follow. When I began teaching, I figured my salary would start out relatively low, but I knew teaching was my career, and with that, I expected increases in pay as I proved my dedication and expertise. I know that I began as an amazing teacher because Lavonia only hires the best, and I've only grown over the years. I've grown through classroom experiences, professional development, and by earning my graduate degree. Over these same years, my bills have grown as well. I owe over $20,000 for my graduate schooling, and I have two children with one on the way. It costs my family over $110 per day just for daycare. If my pay continues to stagnate, I am worried that I won't be able to pay my everyday bills, let alone send my children to college. Since the time I was hired, I have endured many obstacles. I have been pink-slept and surplused many times and happily taken whatever position the district has offered, everything from teaching only two classes to changing buildings in the middle of the year. I have always held out for that phone call from LPS over the summer because I am committed to this district. I am only at the step 1.5, and I really feel, after seven years, that Lavonia Public Schools has not invested in me. I love working for this district, but I would like to see Lavonia Public Schools value my experience. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. The next blue slip that I have is from Melody Proventure. Melody?
Good evening, President Burton, Board members, and Superintendent Oquist. My name is Melody Proventure, and I've been a music teacher in Lavonia Public Schools for 28 years, and a music teacher for 34 years. I'm also a product of Lavonia Public Schools. I attended Lincoln Elementary, Frost Junior High, that's what it was called, a junior high, it had ninth grade, and Bentley High School. I'm a resident of Lavonia, and my daughter attended Lavonia Public Schools as well and is a graduate from here. I currently teach K-6 music, and I'm a teacher-leader for the elementary music. I always wanted to return to Lavonia to teach and give back to the community that offered me so much as a student, which led me to choosing the profession of a music teacher. When I finished my student teaching, there were actually too many teachers, which is not so true today due to the stagnant wages we have. So it took a few years before I had a chance to even apply and be hired by LPS. I'm glad that I get to do what I love to do and here in Lavonia Public Schools, and that is to teach. For me, it was different than it is For me, it was different than it is for our current incoming teachers. I was hired in with the understanding that there was a level commitment, that my salary would follow a step process, that allowed me to reach the top step, and it did. The step process allowed me to complete my master's degree in music ed, attend other professional development conferences throughout the years without an undue burden. The ability to attend conferences and attain my master's degree helped me become a better teacher and to become a teacher of teachers. Teachers starting out now start out on the first step and are not receiving any further steps to help them increase their salaries, which would allow them monies to reach their goals of master's degrees, raising a family, maybe even purchasing a home, right here in Livonia. It's so important for Livonia Public Schools that we support our young teachers as they seek to improve and learn to become better teachers. As a resident of Livonia, I am concerned that we will not be able to keep or even hire quality teachers in the future if this pattern of no-salary increase continues. We must give our teachers a path to advance in their careers. We need to value our teachers and help them become the successful teachers that they can be. We have great, no, we have excellent teachers here in Livonia Public Schools, and I'd like to see that tradition continue. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next blue slip is from Russ Keverly. Russ? Welcome.
First, I want to thank Superintendent Oquist, the members of the Cabinet, and the members of the School Board for the trust you've invested in me with our most valuable resource, our students. For the past 17 years, I've been fortunate to teach in the Livonia Public Schools, and in that time, I've coached a variety of sports, I've advised yearbooks, served on committees, helped write and rewrite curriculum. I've run numerous clubs and after-school activities, and I've worked actively as an advocate for our teachers as a union member. Through the course of all these experiences, I've taken comfort in the many meaningful relationships I've established with my colleagues, our administrative teams, and, most importantly, our students and our families. However, nothing gives me greater satisfaction than knowing I was able to share my career with my children. Brendan, Brendan Logan, their first sporting events were spent on the sidelines at Franklin High School, watching me coach varsity basketball, and they know the excitement of the Friday Night Lights, watching football and homecoming games at both Franklin and Stevenson. Their first experience at the theater was Fiddler on the Roof, presented by Kappa Program at Churchill, and they understand the skill of improvisation through the student-directed performances of the Stevenson pantomime shows. They learned the value of teamwork in the summer, watching my wife and I develop yearbooks with our staffs, collaborating and working with young adults, and they learned the value of hard work and labor, helping my wife and I purge materials through the bond process, a skill, quite frankly, I wish translated more often at home. They first understood the impact of community service and fundraising through the Holmes Middle School Student Senate Color Walks. Their first live concert was the parent-student holiday performances at Holmes Middle School, and they first learned to ski and snowboard at Mount Brighton, also through the Holmes Ski Club. The list goes on, as you can see. Yet, despite all these meaningful life lessons, I take pause when Brendan Logan looked to my wife and I and say, "They too want to be teachers like their parents." As we all commonly agree, a parent's primary instinct, and I apologize, this is my mom's fault. You all know her well enough. A parent's primary instinct in life is to protect the safety and well-being of their children. Don't get me wrong, Brendan Logan would make outstanding educators. When at play with their younger cousins and friends, they demonstrate some of the greater qualities that make a teacher. They are caring, patient, and understanding. Regrettably, I can't help but imagine my son or daughter trying to thrive and enjoy the experiences I have, given the current climate of education. I struggle with imagining my kids working in the current roles and financial circumstances of our younger teachers, and I struggle knowing Brendan Logan may never know teaching and have the same exciting moments in the manner that Janelle and I have had for so many years. Please know, Jill and I have never told our children no. But, for now, we pause, because one thing is for certain, and that's unfortunately, the uncertainty of teaching as a viable profession. Our current legislation has been very successful in vilifying teachers and their unions, and more discouraging is the fact that our governor has been successful in dividing and fracturing the working relationships of teachers' unions and their respective school boards across the state of Michigan through one side of legislation. The current trends of flat funding are not sustainable if we expect our school systems, like Livonia, to thrive in the coming years, and by contrast, our teachers across the state of Michigan cannot accept zero growth in our profession, while the world around us continues to experience economic prosperity. It simply sends the message that this is okay. However, we cannot do this alone. We must find the resilience to work together, as we've done so so successfully in the past. Our community depends on it, our students depend on it, and of course, the future of public education depends on it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else in the audience who would like to address the Board at this time? Seeing none, the next item on our agenda is 3H, Response to Prior Audience Communications. There have been a number of teachers and folks in our education community who have approached the Board over the last few weeks, and I would like to respond on behalf of the Board. First and foremost, it's very important that the folks who have been speaking know that the message has been heard and it's been understood, that the issues that the teachers are bringing forth apply not only to the teachers, but to all of our staff in Livonia Public Schools, and to public education throughout the state of Michigan, and that's clearly recognized. Like nearly every school district in the state of Michigan, for the past many years, Livonia Public Schools has been operating under significant financial stress, and unfortunately, we continue to do so. Livonia Public Schools is not unlike other districts. We have $23 million less in annual revenue than we have had seven years ago. Livonia Public Schools has made $17 million in budget reductions since 2010, and that's in addition to the $31 million that we made in budget reductions from the years 2002 to 2010. This is all in response to state funding, as was just alluded to. Even with those cutbacks, our district still has a fund balance of 2%, making us an early warning district. However, even with these cutbacks, Livonia Public Schools has been and continues to offer excellent educational opportunities to our students, as was evidenced tonight, through the efforts of our staffs, which are wonderful and appreciated, our community members, who are so valued, and our parents, who are very, very dedicated to raising their children, and we thank the effort of everybody who works in this district. The district's focus has been on preserving programs, on maintaining reasonable class sizes, and offering unique learning opportunities for all of our students, and this is for our existing students and for our new families who are joining our district each day. It's very important to note that the vast majority of our revenue is controlled directly by Lansing, not by this school district and not by this Board of Education. To that end, we need the voices of our Board of Education members, of our administrators, of our staff, of our parents, and our community members, and they are numerous, to speak clearly, collaboratively, and consistently, and let folks in Lansing know that public education must be adequately funded consistently and comprehensively by the state of Michigan, as was promised by Proposal A. We are advocating to that end, and we ask everyone to continue to join us. Thank you so much for listening. The next item on our agenda is Item 4, our Consent Agenda. May I have a motion, please?
President Burton?
Mrs. Jarvis?
Move that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District approve the following Consent Agenda items as recommended by the Superintendent. Item 5A, Minutes of the Regular Meeting of January 19th, 2016. 5B, Minutes of the Special Meetings, 2, of January 19th, 2016. 5C, Minutes of the Closed Sessions, 2, of January 19th, 2016. Item 6A, Bills for Payment, February 9th, 2016.
Support.
We have a motion by Mrs. Jarvis, supported by Mr. Centers. Are there any questions or comments on this item? Seeing none, Mrs. Bonnefield, you please take the roll.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mrs. Laura?
Yes.
Mrs. McDonnell?
Yes.
Mrs. Bonnefield says yes.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Would you like this to pass? Yes, please. If everyone could pass down their minutes of the closed session. The next item on our agenda is Item 5A, Under Personnel, the Appointment of Special Education Principal. May I have a motion, please?
President Burton?
Mr. Johnson?
Move that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District accept the recommendation of the Superintendent and appoint Patrick Mies to the position of principal of the Western Wayne Skill Center.
Support. We have a motion by Mr. Johnson, supported by Mrs. McDonnell, and Mrs. Oquist or Mr. Winry, which one would you like to address this item for us?
Mrs. Oquist, this evening.
Okay. Go right ahead.
We drew door number, Mrs. Oquist.
Sounds good.
I'd like to invite Patrick Mies to join us up here, so we can share a little bit about Patrick. As you know, Board of Education and members of the community, this process of selecting a building principal is one that we value and take very seriously, and this role was no exception. That process first begins with building the profile of a leader specific to the school community they will be serving. So toward that end, we had the opportunity to garner quite a bit of very, very helpful and meaningful input in building a profile for a leader at the Western Wayne Skill Center. One of the things we feel very, very, very good about this evening is not only the qualifications that Mr. Mies brings to this role, which I'll highlight in a few minutes, but really the number of ways in which he was able to match that profile, about which the staff and the community felt so strongly. So let me share with you a little bit about Mr. Mies. He has his Bachelor of Science from EMU in Special Education, a master's degree also from Eastern in Educational Leadership, as well as an Educational Specialist Degree from Wayne State University. He is currently working on his PhD in Educational Leadership, and that is expected in 2017. He comes to us most recently from Crestwood School District, where he has served as an assistant principal at the high school, but he is actually, we like to think of, as coming back home.
Yes.
He started his career in Livonia as a special education teacher at the Western Wayne Skill Center, also spent time as a special education teacher at Churchill High School. He is very active in his community. He is a third-generation homeowner of the same home in Livonia.
Yes.
And brought his beautiful family along with him here this evening, which I'm sure, who I'm sure you will introduce. We are so pleased to share our recommendation with you of Mr. Mies. Again, not only the credentials that he brings to this role, the background that he has, but the passion and the commitment and advocacy he looks forward to sharing about the Western Wayne Skill Center. So we share with you our highest recommendation for him to fill this role.
Thank you. Mr. Mies?
Thank you very much, Superintendent Oquist. Good evening, Board members, Administrative Cabinet, community members. I'm just so grateful to stand before you today and seek the appointment of the principalship at the Western Wayne Skill Center. When I was at the Skill Center about, I began there 13 years ago, and I always thought that someday it would be great to be the principal of that building. I'd never really thought that it would happen, because, you know, we all have these thoughts in our head, and it's contingent upon availability and, you know, where I would be in my career. And the fact that this is potentially happening with your appointment, it's just so exciting for me. And I would like to introduce my wife, Shelby, and our three children, Nora, Ava, and Nicholas. And as I was sitting here throughout the meeting, I was thinking about the interview process. I went through four interviews, and I thought that they were fairly nerve-wracking, until I sat here with my little ones, with the meeting going on. That was the real test for grace under pressure, and I hope that I've passed.
You know what? If children are not welcome in a Board of Education meeting, then something's wrong. So your kids are very welcome any day.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Go ahead.
I think that's it. I just really look forward to working with the teachers, the students, the staff members, parents, community in general, in helping to propel the program forward to the best that I can, in combination with the other stakeholders. I'm just thrilled. So thank you so much for allowing me to stand before you this evening.
Thank you. You are so very welcome. We are equally thrilled to have you here. Are there questions or comments from the Board? Mr. Johnson? Go right ahead.
Just out of curiosity, James Mies?
He was my grandfather.
Ed Mies?
My uncle.
I don't softball with your uncle.
Oh, okay.
Many, many years ago. Won't tell you how many.
All righty. Are there questions or other comments from the Board?
Congratulations.
Thank you so much.
And for a relatively young person, you've established quite a number of credentials, a lot of letters behind your name at this point.
Thank you. I appreciate, thank you.
Thank you so much, and this unique position, as you said, it is very unique, and Mrs. Oquist and I had this conversation. It's difficult to find someone who's got the right kind of experience, and Livonia Public Schools is blessed to have you being able to come into the position and take on this challenge. We appreciate it.
Likewise, and I was grateful when I heard Superintendent Oquist say in one of my interviews that this position is very important to the district, and when you look at the number of students that we're talking about, it's relatively minor, but we're talking about a very special population, and these students deserve all the support that they can get from the Board, the community, and those who work with them every day. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We have a motion right now by Mr. Johnson, supported by Mrs. McDonnell. Mrs. Bonnefield, you please take the roll.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mrs. McDonnell?
Yes.
Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mrs. Laura?
Yes.
Mrs. Bonnefield says yes. President Burton?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Congratulations, you're our new principal.
Thank you so much.
All righty. The next item on our agenda is Item 5B, Teachers for Approval. May I have a motion, please?
President Burton?
Mrs. McDonnell?
Move that the Board of Education of Livonia Public Schools School District accept the recommendation of the Superintendent and offer employment for the 2015-16 school year to the teachers listed on the attached document.
Support.
We have a motion by Mrs. McDonnell, supported by Mr. Centers. And Mr. Winry, would you like to address this item? Or will that be Mr. Francis tonight? He's busy. Threw us all for a little-
Why, thank you.
Yes. Hello. Good thing we can all multitask.
Teachers, before you have been interviewed, along with other candidates for the vacancies, which existed in our instructional programs, and as always, we believe that the teachers we've selected are the most qualified for the positions, and we ask for your approval for their appointment. I'd add that all the vacancies that we have filled were a result of either resignations, mid-year retirements, or voluntary reductions in appointment. All of those positions are in our current budget.
All righty. Thank you so much. Are there any questions or comments from the members of the Board? All righty. Seeing none, we have a motion by Mrs. McDonnell, supported by Mr. Centers. Mrs. Bonnefield, you please take the roll.
Mrs. McDonnell?
Yes.
Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mrs. Laura?
Yes.
Mrs. Bonnefield says yes. President Burton?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you, and congratulations to our new teachers. The next item on our agenda is Item 5C, Resignations. There's not a motion for this. This item is for information only, correct, Mrs. Oquist?
It is.
Okay. Thank you. The next item on our agenda is Item 5D, Retirements. May I have a motion, please?
President Burton?
Mrs. Bonnefield?
Move that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District adopt the attached resolutions of appreciation for the services rendered by Christine Daly, Georgia Greve, Janet Hubacher, and Melissa Taylor, I'm sorry, Melie-
Malicia.
I'm so sorry. I apologize. Malicia Taylor.
Support.
We have a motion by Mrs. Bonnefield, supported by Mrs. Jarvis. Here, Mr. Winry, would you like to address this item also?
Yes, thank you. These four employees that are retiring have a total of almost 80 years of service, and on behalf of Administration, I'd sure like to thank those employees- And on behalf of administration, I'd sure like to thank those employees for their dedicated and loyal service to the district. We would ask the Board to approve these resolutions of appreciation.
Thank you. Are there questions or comments from members of the Board? All righty. Congratulations. Yes, congratulations on starting your new chapter, and thank you so much for your service. We have a motion by Mrs. Bonnefield, supported by Mrs. Jarvis. Mrs. Bonnefield, will you please take the role?
Mrs. Bonnefield says yes. Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mrs. Laura?
Yes.
Mrs. McDonald?
Yes.
President Burton?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. The next item on our agenda is Item 5E, Sympathy Resolution. May I have a motion, please?
President Burton?
Mrs. Laura?
Move that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District adopt the attached sympathy resolution for the family of Roland H. Upton Jr. And President Burton, if I may read the resolution at this time.
Please do.
Thank you. Whereas the Board of Education was saddened to hear of the untimely death of Roland Upton Jr., and whereas he was employed by the Livonia Public Schools School District as an Assistant Superintendent/Business Administrator and Superintendent from 1958 through 1974, and whereas he has consistently demonstrated his outstanding dedication to students, parents, and staff, and whereas Roland Upton Jr. will be remembered with great fondness and with profound sense of gratitude for the immeasurable contributions he made to our school district, now therefore be it resolved that the Livonia Board, or that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District offer its deepest sympathy to the family and friends of Roland Upton Jr.
Thank you.
Support.
We have a motion by Mrs. Laura, supported by Mrs. Bonnefield. Mrs. Oakwest, would you like to address this item also?
It would be my pleasure. I'd like to share with you a little bit about, it says Roland Upton, he went by Ron Upton. And Ron Upton was the fourth Superintendent in Livonia Public Schools. He served in that role for five years, from 1969 to 1974, following service as an Assistant Superintendent for Business. He, by all accounts, and I've had the opportunity to speak to a number of people who knew Ron, was a wonderful man, had a great sense of humor, a gregarious personality. He attended graduate school at Columbia University on a Carnegie Fellowship, and during his time in Livonia, if you can imagine, he oversaw the expansion of the school district during one of its largest periods of growth, when we erected over 30 new schools during the time of his administration. I had the privilege of speaking with his lovely wife, Jane. They lived in, or she still lives, in Vancouver, Washington, and just this weekend, they had a memorial service for Ron. And I extended our condolences on behalf of the school board and our entire school district. And she shared the wonderful memories that they have of Livonia, of his time in Livonia Public Schools, and it was such a pleasure to hear from her and what a gracious and lovely woman she is. And again, she was so grateful for the resolution from the Board of Education. I indicated we would be sending it to her and to her family, and extending our deepest thanks for Superintendent Upton's service in our remembrance of him. So again, many, many fond memories for a very dynamic leader who oversaw a tremendous period of growth in Livonia Public Schools. So again, our fourth Superintendent recently passed, and we remember him with great fondness.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments from the Board of Education? No, all righty. We have a motion by Mrs. Laura, supported by Mrs. Bonnefield. Mrs. Bonnefield, will you please take the role?
Mrs. Laura?
Yes.
Mrs. Bonnefield says yes. Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mrs. McDonald?
Yes.
President Burton?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. And thank you, Mrs. Oakwest, for getting that to Mrs. Upton.
It's my pleasure.
The next item on our agenda is Item 6, Business Matters. 6B, Approval of Resolution to Ratify the Sale of Bonds, 2016 Series 2. May I have a motion, please?
President Burton?
Mr. Centers?
Move that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District approve the resolution to ratify the sale of the second series of the 2013 voter-approved bonds.
Do I have a- Mrs. McDonald, okay. We have a motion by Mr. Centers, supported by Mrs. McDonald. And Ms. Abby, would you like to address this for us?
Yes, thank you much. I am at the podium this evening because I'd first like to introduce Carrie Shae from Chuen Law. As you will recall, Carrie has been here a couple other times on our last sale of bonds and has been working with the district and is very qualified on bond sales and all of the detailed legalese that come along with that. So I will just provide a little bit of background on what we're approving this evening, and then Carrie and I would both be available to answer any questions you might have. So just a little quick history, of course, the Board, the community approved $195 million bond back in May of 2013. And you'll recall, of course, at that time, that we decided to sell those bonds in two different series. Series 1 sold in June of 2013, and the remainder were sold in February of 2016. The reason we split those up into two different series is twofold. One, $195 million is a lot of money. As you know, there's a tremendous amount of renovations going on at our schools, but to manage that, we do several schools a year, but not all of our schools in three quick years. The state does require us to spend approximately 85% of the bond earnings in three years. So that would mean that we would have had to spend all, most of that money within three years. So really difficult to manage. Second to that, and probably even more importantly, is if we can't spend the money that quickly, it doesn't make sense for us to borrow that ahead of time. So we wait until we need the money for the projects and then borrow that remaining money. So I'll just remind you in the community that our first sale of bonds was very successful. We actually sold those at a premium, meaning that the par value, or in layman's terms, the amount that we owe back for the bonds was less than we originally anticipated. This market in February of 2016 was the same and even better. We had a very favorable bond market. First of all, I have to appreciate the people who help us through that process of putting all the paperwork together and deciding when it is a good time to go out there and sell bonds. Certainly not something we do here in the district frequently, so we appreciate the support of our professional staff, which included PFM, Paul Stotter, as well as Chuen Law Firm, Carrie, and Matt Heiser. You'll remember, Bev Bonning has done this for many years, but she actually retired this year. So we're sad to see her go, but she is back there, is a Principal still with the law firm, providing advice and guidance. But we had an excellent staff this year. So again, with the details, we did have our second series. The Board had authorized $87 million to be sold. We actually sold what we needed for 76 million. We had a premium of almost $10.8 million, a little over $10.8 million. So what that means is what we have to pay back to the bondholders is less than we would have. So that means obviously that our community has to raise, provide less in taxes so that we meet that premium and interest obligation over the next 30 years. So that's a very good thing. When we look at the two series together, that's almost $15.5 million less in debt that we have with these two series than what the Board of Education had originally authorized. So very pleased to be bringing this to you, and it does provide all of the resources that we had intended as well. So we do have $195 million in resources for all of our costs in construction. So very good news. You had in your packet, on Thursday, you had very detailed information with that. I provided all of that detailed explanation. We will also get the actual schedules from our financial group out on the website as soon as they're finalized. We did that with the first series, and we'll go ahead and do that with the second series so the community has the opportunity to access that information as well. And with that, I think I have said what I needed to for this, and I'd be happy to answer any questions, or if you had a chance, I just want to, sorry, I didn't say out loud. What you are looking at tonight is a ratification of the sale. You previously, in December, authorized us to go out and sell the bonds. Now what you're approving tonight is the detailed numbers in the sale of the bond, which I've explained to you and which you've received. So you're saying that, yes, you agree, this is what we told you we were going to do, and it does fit within the confines of what you had approved originally. So you're really just saying, yes, we accept the sale of bonds. So with that, answer any questions.
Thank you for the information. And are there questions or comments from the Board? Seeing none.
Okay, thank you very much.
We have a motion by Mr. Centers, supported by Mrs. McDonald. And Mrs. Bonnefield, will you please take the role?
Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mrs. McDonald?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mrs. Laura?
Yes.
Mrs. Bonnefield says yes. President Burton?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. The next item on our agenda is Item 6C, Approval of Bid Results for Abatement, Stevenson High School. May I have a motion, please?
President Burton?
Mrs. Jarvis?
Move that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District approve the recommendation from our owner's representative, Plant Moran Cressa, to approve the Stevenson High School abatement project budget for $200,207 and contingency funds of $40,041, for a total amount of $240,248, and authorize the Assistant Superintendent of Business to negotiate and execute final contracts on behalf of the Board of Education with recommended contractors.
Support.
We have a motion by Mrs. Jarvis, supported by Mrs. Laura. And Ms. Abby, would you like to address this item also?
Thank you. Sorry, I didn't-
You moved.
I moved back to my seat. Yes, thank you very much. We are bringing forward four items related to our 2013 bond this evening. Plant Moran Cressa is here to help me out if we have any questions, Paul Terrio. We did have an opportunity on all four of these items at our Finance Committee to spend a great deal of time going through those. Of course, at that time, you received your big binder with four or five sections on each of the topics that we're going to talk about this evening, significant amount of detail. So again, we'll go through these, and we'll be happy to answer any questions, or Mr. Terrio can as well. This motion this evening, this first motion, is to hire contractors for the abatement work at Stevenson High School. So as you know, we do have to do some environmental work at each of our schools where we'll be doing construction. This recommendation was put together by Arch Environmental. You'll hear me talk about them a little bit later this evening. They are recommending the low vendor to meet all specifications for $200,207. And again, we have a contingency budget along with that, and this will follow all of the other environmental bids that the Board has approved on our first two years, as well as our elementary and middle school for this summer, Phase 3 schools, and we would recommend approving this.
Thank you. Are there questions or comments from the Board? Mrs. McDonald?
Thank you, President Burton. Ms. Abby and Paul. Ms. Abby, I'd like to thank you for getting the documentation over to us today. It was very helpful. I do have one question. When we were discussing last week the bid tabulation, and there was an item that wasn't noted on the final figures that we received today, which was the spray-on fireproofing. And Ms. Abby indicated that it was something that we just got a quote on, but we aren't necessarily going to need this product, but maybe just a little clarification from Mr. Terrio to explain the situation so I could feel better about my vote. So, thank you.
Sure. So when we put this package out, we asked the consultant to be very thorough with making sure we had unit prices for anything that we could possibly run into, which is why they got a unit price for fire spray. As we started looking into the building more and investigating more, we really didn't come across any. So even though we have a unit price for it, in the event that we opened up a wall or something like that, and there might be a column that was sprayed and insulated, we have the unit price, but at the moment, we don't believe there is any. So in a building of that nature, there typically wouldn't be. You'd find that more in like a multi-story building where the floors are rated, like a two-hour rating from floor to floor to floor. But in a high school building, I wouldn't typically see that. So it's there if we need it, but at the moment, we don't think we do.
I just have one other question in reference to that. If, how concrete is that price? Because their price is higher than everyone else's for that service. So I guess my concern is, if you do run into it and their price is higher, then is there any way that you will possibly negotiate with them to reduce that down?
Yeah, for some reason, we did run into some, and by the way, I've been through that building, including all the tunnels, several times, and I've never seen any. But if we did, it doesn't mean we have to use them. We could just take that scope of work and separate it out and have someone else come in and do it. We're expecting this overall cost to come down quite a bit. One of the big portions of the work is the duct insulation down in the tunnel. That's really only if we disturb it, and there are some areas where we don't think we're going to have to disturb it, so that number should come down if anything.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
You're welcome.
And Paul, I assume this is consistent with all of our other bids, that the district takes the most conservative look and most conservative estimate of our numbers so that we don't get caught into a problem, which is why we'll see things like this come up periodically.
Exactly.
Okay. All righty. Thank you. Are there any other questions or comments from the Board? Mrs. Jarvis?
Thank you, President Burton. My understanding, and Mr. Terrio, after you've sat down, is that this is done as unit pricing, so these numbers could vary.
Yeah, it's a little bit different. It's a little bit different than we've done it in the past. This year, we are working with a different consultant, and we kind of put our heads together about how we could control the costs a little bit better, so we got unit prices on everything we could think of, and then went through the building and measured quantities. We actually had the consultant go through and measure floor tile, caulking doors, windows, things of that nature, to try to come up with everything that may be disturbed. Now, there could be some areas that we don't end up disturbing, like the duct insulation down in the tunnel and some other things like that. So this is really, I'm looking at it as almost a not-to-exceed number, sort of kind of a worst-case scenario, the conservative approach, and if anything, it should come down hopefully quite substantially, so.
That was my next thought.
Mine too, always.
All righty. Any other questions from Board members? All righty. Thank you, Paul. And seeing none, we have a motion by Mrs. Jarvis, supported by Mrs. Laura. Mrs. Bonnefield, will you please take the role?
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mrs. Laura?
Yes.
Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mrs. McDonald?
Yes.
Mrs. Bonnefield says yes. President Burton?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. The next item is 6D, Approval of Bid Results for Construction, Upper Elementary and Middle School Projects. May I have a motion, please?
President Burton?
Mr. Johnson?
Move that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District approve the recommendation from our owner's representative, Plant Moran Cressa, to approve the construction project for Phase 3 Johnson Upper Elementary School, $5,457,271, and Holmes Middle School, $6,052,736, plus contingency of $865,816, for a total of $12,375,823, and authorize the Assistant Superintendent of Business to negotiate and execute final contracts on behalf of the Board of Education with the recommended contractors.
Support.
We have a motion by Mr. Johnson, supported by Mrs. McDonald. Ms. Abby, would you like to address this item?
Yes, thank you very much. This is the results of the bids for the upper elementary school, which will be Johnson Upper Elementary, and middle school will be Holmes Middle School this summer. This is our last middle school projects, our last upper elementary projects. So with this being Phase III, we will have done all three, five, six, and all three middle schools. So very excited about that. We did provide the opportunity to go through these bids last time from Barton Mallow, our construction manager. You do have that detail in your packet. This is for all of the contracts for the upper elementary and middle school projects. And we're eager to get started. We're very pleased to bring this recommendation. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Are there questions from the Board of Education? Seeing none, we have a motion by Mr. Johnson, supported by Mrs. McDonald. Mrs. Bonnefield, will you take the role, please?
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mrs. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mrs. Laura?
Yes.
Mrs. McDonald, uh, sorry, Mrs. Bonnefield says yes. President Burton?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. That one was quick and easy, huh? The next item on our agenda is 6E, Approval of Bid Results for Construction Rebids Elementary School Projects. May I have a motion, please?
Uh, President Burton?
Mrs. McDonald? Move that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District approve the recommendation from our owner's representative, Plant Moran Cressa, to approve the construction rebid for Phase III elementary schools for construction and contingency costs of $258,298 for a total revised cost of $9,792,325 for these projects, and authorize the Assistant Superintendent for Business to negotiate and execute final contracts on behalf of Livonia Public Schools School District Board of Education with the contractors list as listed.
Support.
We have a motion by Mrs. McDonald, supported by Mr. Johnson. Ms. Abby, would you address this for us?
Yes, the Board of Education, previously, we had brought the entire bid award for our elementary schools for this summer, and there were three trades that we had to rebid. You're looking this evening at two of those trades. We did have an opportunity, again, to go through those in detail at our committee meeting. And what you're approving tonight is that additional amount of money to be added to the full cost for these three elementary schools. And what you have attached in the budget is the revised total for the entire project to date. We will be bringing one more item to you, and as we discussed last time, that would be the painting at Randolph. So we are working on a solution for that and should be bringing that to you shortly. So we'll have one more rebid for the elementary schools, and then we will be all set to go. And as Paul mentioned last time, that really isn't time-sensitive, like some of our other bids are. We don't need to order equipment ahead of time, or windows, or those kinds of things. So we're good on timing on that issue. So we would appreciate approving this this evening, and we'll get forward these contractors going.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments from the Board? Mr. Centers?
I just want to thank Ms. Abby and her staff, as well as the people at Cressa. There's a number of projects in every project that we have. So the number of schools, but so many projects in each one, I could tell that we're doing a very nice job of really taking our time with each piece of that, making sure it's done right. And like our previous schools, I'm sure these will turn out great. So you've given us a lot of information over the last couple of weeks. It's been very informative. So thank you very much.
You're welcome. Are there any other comments or questions from the Board? Seeing none, we have a motion by Mrs. McDonald, supported by Mr. Johnson. Mrs. Bonnefield, will you please take the role?
Mrs. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mrs. Laura?
Yes.
Mrs. Bonnefield says yes. President Burton?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. The next item on our agenda is Item, let me see here, Item 6F, Approval of Environmental Consultant for Stevenson High School. May I have a motion, please?
President Burton?
Mrs. Bonnefield?
Move that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District approve the recommendation from the owner's representative, Plant Moran Cressa, to appoint Arch Environmental Group for the Stevenson High School Bond Project at a cost of $40,000, and authorize the Assistant Superintendent for Business Services to negotiate and execute final contracts on behalf of the Board of Education.
Support.
We have a motion by Mrs. Bonnefield, supported by Mr. Centers. Ms. Abby, would you like to address this for us?
Yes, thank you very much. As you know, we do hire a professional consultant to help us on the environmental issues with each of our construction projects. Their job is to be the person, number one, onsite during all of the construction to monitor any environmental work being done. They also help us prior to that, putting, going through the buildings, finding out what the issues are, and helping us put our bid packages together. And then again, a very important part of being onsite and monitoring what is going on in our schools during first stages with the environmental work. So very important job. As you know, we, Arch Environmental, was also appointed for the middle school projects as well, so they'll be working at our upper elementary, middle school, and Stevenson High School this summer as we get started on these projects. So we would recommend their approval.
All righty. Are there any questions or comments from the Board? Seeing none, we have a motion by Mrs. Bonnefield, supported by Mr. Centers. And Mrs. Bonnefield, will you please take the role?
Mrs. Bonnefield says yes. Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mrs. Laura?
Yes.
Mrs. McDonald?
Yes.
President Burton?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. The next item on our agenda is Item 6G, Approval of Bid Results for McKinley Demolition. May I have a motion, please?
President Burton?
Mrs. Laura?
Thank you. Move that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District, based upon the recommendation of Assistant Superintendent of Business Services Lisa Abbey, prepare the contracts for the Livonia Public Schools with International Construction Incorporated Shelby Townshend, Michigan, to demolish McKinley School at a total cost of $239,900. Also move that upon receipt of contracts, approved payment, and performance bonds, Lisa Abbey is authorized to sign said contracts on behalf of the Board of Education.
Support.
We have a motion by Mrs. Laura, supported by Mrs. Bonnefield. Ms. Abby, would you like to address this?
Yes, thank you. We will change gears a little bit from bond approvals. We have had an opportunity for several months to discuss the school building on the McKinley site. As you know, that building has been closed as an elementary school for many years, and it was being used as especially for Franklin High School classes, and then also we had several renters in that building for many years. Unfortunately, our major renter, Bell Creek, found a property on Five Mile and moved out. And what we found is that that building was not self-sustaining and was actually a drain on the district's resources. We did, this past school year, find opportunities to move Franklin students back into Franklin High School and to move the other programs in that school to other locations throughout the district in order to save the costs of running that building. And to that end, we've been successful. Obviously, it costs us less, but one of the issues is we now have a vacant building, which unfortunately still requires some resources of the districts in terms of running some of the utilities, as well as, we've discussed before, the unsightliness of a vacant building in a community, especially as that starts to look a little old and tired, whether that's windows that are broken that we need to replace, or we don't replace because we don't have the resources. So we had a lot of discussion at this table about the time would be to demolish that building. One is to save the resources of the district, which is obviously very important. But another reason is to provide some additional green space for Franklin High School. So as you know, Franklin is landlocked, and we are putting up a very large performing arts building that's taking up a little bit of their front space. So by taking McKinley down, not only does it save the district resources, but it does provide an opportunity to have some more practice fields over on that site for McKinley. As you know, we've also had an opportunity to meet with the community. Mr. Harry Lau, Superintendent Oakwist and I went out and met with the community and to get some input from them. We continue to hear back from people from time to time, and we'll be looking at some of their input before we make any final decisions about exactly how that space is going to look. So what we're asking you to approve this evening is just simply the demolition of the building. We'll continue to work with the principal of Franklin and our operations staff to look at exactly what we're going to do with that space once the building is down. As we've talked about before, we're bringing that to you now because the winter is a good time to do demolition of buildings. So we did go out for a formal bid. We had an opportunity to discuss the bids at our last meeting. We are recommending the lowest responsible bidder, International, and we have worked with them in the past and are comfortable with their professionalism and the way in which they handle all of the demolition issues in our community. So with that recommendation, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Are there questions or comments from the Board? Mr. Johnson?
Thank you, President Burton. This is a sinking fund-
This is a sinking fund expense. Thank you.
Okay. And the option is to keep it open, which will cost us resources. And after a certain period of time, if we wanted to use that school, to bring it out of mothballs, so to speak, it would cost a significant amount of money to bring that up to code.
Correct. There is a timeline that the state requires that if it hasn't been occupied, or used as a school, and you have to meet all the current codes, which are more stringent even than what we have in place to date. So it'd be like having a brand-new building.
Thank you.
All righty. Any other questions or comments from the Board? Mr. Centers?
If I recall correctly, Mrs. Oakwist, you went and met with the community. Can you share their feedback?
Sure. I'd be happy to. We had a good turnout, as far as those types of meetings go. We spent a couple hours with folks out there, and we were able to answer a number of questions related to the demolition of the property, how that process took place. They were also, gave us a lot of feedback with regard to the needs that they thought that the school may have with that space specifically, to look at the potential of adding some additional parking areas over, when we added some of that open space next to Franklin. We got feedback from the community in general about that, the neighborhood area, the utilization of Franklin and the McKinley property. It was a very productive meeting, and we garnered email addresses, et cetera, and are able to still stay in communication with them. We did have an opportunity, we had a request for the ability to remove some plantings as, you know, as a memory of the school, and so Mrs. Jenkins was able to facilitate that as well. And so we believe there's support in the community for raising the building, primarily because of the concerns they had with regard to keeping a vacant school open and some of the issues that can be, that can take place around that with regard to vandalism or just the general presentation of a school once it's no longer utilized as an educational resource.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Are there any other questions or comments from the Board? Mrs. Jarvis?
Thank you, President Burton. I just wanted to clarify for those who are listening, who may be wondering how we can come up with this large sum of money to demolish a building, but we are not able to come up with money to put more towards the classrooms, that this comes from the sinking fund, as Superintendent Oakwist mentioned, and that we are not able to take money from one pot and put it into another. Sinking fund dollars are used for building maintenance and roof repairs and so on, and they're not, sinking fund dollars cannot go towards any other operational expenses. So this is not money that could be spent in a different way.
Any other comments or questions from the Board? And as a piggyback on Mrs. Jarvis's comments, the expenditures that we approved prior to this, this evening, have all been bond dollars also. So as we mentioned at the last meeting, as was pointed out by Mrs. Oakwist, it's, the money's being spent tonight are bond dollars that are exclusively for our upgrades and the sinking fund, which can only be used for major repairs and significant building upgrades. We have a motion by Mrs. Laura, supported by Mrs. Bonnefield. Mrs. Bonnefield, will you please take the role?
Mrs. Laura?
Yes.
Mrs. Bonnefield says yes. Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mrs. McDonald?
Yes.
President Burton?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. The next item on our agenda is Item 6H, Approval of Bid Results for Playscape, Rosedale, and Garfield. Great Start Readiness Program, GSRP. May I have a motion, please?
President Burton?
Mr. Centers?
Move that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District accept the low bid for play structure equipment for Rosedale Elementary and Farmington, pardon me, and Garfield Elementary, GSRP from Play Environments Inc., Allen, Michigan, for a total cost of $32,198.
Support. We have a motion by Mr. Centers, supported by Mrs. McDonald. And Ms. Abby, would you like to address this item for us, please?
Yes, thank you very much. Again, we did have an opportunity to go through the details of this at our Finance Committee meeting. We have the GSRP program this year in two of our elementary schools. Very pleased to have those young students in our elementary schools. And they looked at the equipment that was out there and made a request to see if we could find a way to get them some small playscapes at each of those schools. And we did have an opportunity to look at our GSRP grant resources for this year, and we do have that funding available. So following along those same lines, what we're asking you to request this evening will be paid for from the Great Start Readiness Program grant funds, not from the sinking fund, bond fund, or general fund. So we continue to work on resources outside of the general fund. And we did put this out for bid and are recommending the low vendor to meet our specifications. And I know that both schools are very excited to see that equipment, and if the weather holds, we might get started yet before spring. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
All righty. Are there any questions from the Board? Seeing none, we have a motion by Mr. Centers, supported by Mrs. McDonald. Mrs. Bonnefield, will you please take the role?
Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mrs. McDonald?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mrs. Laura?
Yes.
Mrs. Bonnefield says yes. President Burton?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. The next item on our agenda is Item 6I, Approval to Purchase Computer Lab Tables, 2013 Bond. May I have a motion, please?
President Burton?
Mrs. Jarvis?
Move that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District purchase 250 computer tables and power strips from Troxel at a cost of $86,005, with delivery and assembly of the tables at a cost of $8,750. The total cost for this purchase is $94,755.
Support. We have a motion by Mrs. Jarvis, supported by Mrs. Laura. And Mrs. Ellis, would you like to address this item for us?
I would be very happy to. Thank you very much, President Burton. Good evening, everyone. Tonight, I will share with you some of the major points that I presented to the Board of Education last Monday evening during the committee of the whole meeting relative to this motion. Back in December, our Board of Education approved the purchase of additional desktop computers to expand the mini lab in each of our K-4 schools and Webster into full-size computer lab, that bringing the number of computer labs in each of these 13 schools to computer labs. Now that we have the computers, we need the computer lab tables to put the computers on. So we are bringing to you tonight a recommendation to purchase 250 computer lab tables. The computer lab tables will accommodate two computers. And we're also recommending that the power management strip be added to the shelf that is on the underside of the computer lab tables. And both of those items come to a cost of $86,005, and that would be purchased through Troxel. We are also recommending that Troxel be awarded the service to deliver the computer tables from our warehouse to our schools, unpack the tables, assemble the tables, and install the power management strips on the tables, and that cost is $8,750, bringing the total cost for these three items to $94,755. The funds for this purchase will come from the 2013 bond. It's the technology portion of the bond. And since Troxel uses REMC pricing, we do not need then to go out for additional bids. I'd like to remind the Board of the words of our superintendent last Monday evening regarding this purchase. Our K-4 schools really struggled last year with the online testing because they had a single computer lab. And with the additional spring testing this year, in addition to the iReady online assessment that our students are taking three times this year, our schools are truly looking forward to having a second computer lab because it will make a difference in their testing schedules as well as the testing environment. So they are truly looking forward to the additional computer lab in each of their schools. So we do recommend adopting this motion.
All right. Thank you. Are there any questions or comments from the Board? And Mrs. Jarvis?
Thank you, President Burton. I'd just like to mention, it sounds like we're doing this only for the sake of easing our testing, which, you know, as we know, needed a little bit of grease, shall we say? However, this additional computer lab will be used all the time. Right now, we just don't have enough computer opportunities for our children in the elementary schools, and so this is a much-needed resource. And boy, anyone who knows my family knows you can never have too many computers.
Sounds good. Any other comments or questions from the Board? Seeing none, we have a motion by Mrs. Jarvis, supported by Mrs. Laura. Mrs. Bonnefield, will you please take the role?
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mrs. Laura?
Yes.
Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mrs. McDonald?
Yes.
Mrs. Bonnefield says yes. President Burton?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. And thank you, Mrs. Ellis.
On behalf of the 13 elementary schools, I thank the school board as well. Thank you.
You're welcome. The next item on our agenda- The next item on our agenda is Item 6J, Approval of Limited Schools of Choice Program for 2016-2017. May I have a motion, please?
President Burton?
Mr. Johnson?
Thank you. Move that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District accept the recommendation of the superintendent to participate in limited schools of choice under Section 105C for the 2016-17 school year. Openings to include up to 15 students at kindergarten, up to 15 students each grades one through six, up to 10 students at each grade seven through eight, for a total of up to 125 students.
Support.
We have a motion by Mr. Johnson, supported by Mrs. McDonald. Mrs. Oakwist, would you like to address this item for us, please?
Certainly, I'd be happy to, President Burton. As you know, at our study session and again at our committee meeting, we had the opportunity to discuss moving forward with continuing our limited schools of choice program for the 2016-17 school year. Our district currently has a number of students part, as part of the 105C schools of choice in our magnet program. So as a brief review, we have students in our ACAT and MACAT programs, our IB program, and Nijiro, our magnet Japanese immersion elementary school. For the past two years, the district has opened up seats in our general education program. At first, two years ago, in our K-6 schools, at a limited basis of 50 students. Last year, we went K-4, up to 100 students. This year, we've taken the data that we've gathered over the past couple of years with regard to the number of applications as it relates to the openings of grade levels. We've also listened carefully to the feedback from staff and from administration and from the community with regard to the families that are currently a part of our school district under 105C with a request for us to consider limited numbers of openings at an expanded grade level option. We have families that have siblings and under the 105C provision, siblings are granted first priority for openings available. And so although we may not garner that full number of students, it provides the additional flexibility that we think will be needed as, as we look to determine appropriate cost savings options for next school year and revenue enhancement. We know we have work ahead of us with regard to preparing and bringing a balanced budget forward by the end of this school year, and this gets us started. The potential revenue to the general fund would be up to $1 million. That, any amount toward that allows us to save programs for the 14-plus thousand students that we currently serve. So we would recommend this to you this evening.
Thank you. Are there questions or comments from members of the Board of Education? Mrs. Bonnefield?
I just wanted to thank Mrs. Oakwist and her, Superintendent Oakwist and her staff for the huge amount of research and thought that went into the grade level configuration and that just to let the public know that this is not on a whim or a random occurrence that this was, setup was suggested after a lot of research and consideration.
Thank you. Other comments from board members? Few things I would like to, to reiterate and make sure are clearly understood, that this is a limited schools of choice. This is not an open schools of choice. Some surrounding communities have opted for an open schools of choice, which means they will take as many students as they can get. That's fine. And that is absolutely not what this program is. It is very limited with, with either 10 or 15 students, depending on the grade and, and ending at grade eight. Mrs. Oakwist, can you address the addition of grades seven and eight this year? We talked a bit about the staff and then their comments about that concept.
Certainly. A couple of things. One of the things that we realized when we limited the number of grade levels for which families could apply last year was that proportionately, even though we had additional seats, we actually had less applications come in due to the limited number of grades at which we were offering those openings. We also received feedback from some of our staff within the district and again from families within, currently within our district, that the option, the, the very limited option to have some availability at our middle school would allow families to apply as a whole. So they may have a second grader, a fourth grader, and a seventh grader. But oftentimes, families would not consider application under 105C schools of choice if they could not bring all of their children here together. And so again, just as a reminder, when we say up to 10 students at each grade seven and eight, again, that would be 10 students at grade seven across the three middle schools, 10 students at grade eight across the three middle schools. And again, if there are additional applications beyond the openings, then we do have a lottery process that we follow. And again, siblings of students under 105C would be given first preference.
Okay. And Mrs. Oakwist, assuming if, if this is approved tonight, do we know yet what our date window is going to be for people to apply?
We're still formulating the final dates. We would be looking at the March-April period as, as the time in which we know, we've actually already begun receiving a number of calls asking if our district was going to be participating this school year. We are prepared this week to get this information up on our website and get information out. We will not open the window, therefore we will not accept applications quite yet. However, we will get these openings out there. So families that are currently in the process of looking at opportunities, educational opportunities for their children next year, will have this information as early as this week to know that this is an option to consider.
Okay.
So we know the timing of that is very, very important for folks looking to make those educational choices for their children.
All right. And if I remember correctly, there's, by state law, there's going to be a 30-day window in which we can accept applications. Is that correct?
We are utilizing a 30-day window. You can have it as small as 15 days, and you can have it as extended as 30, and then with the possibility of extending that by an additional 15 by request. We have found the 30-day window to be sufficient for us.
Okay. So it's not open yet, and it will not be open yet this week. Information's going out this week, and the date of application, of accepting applications will be coming shortly, and at that point-
That will all be included on the website, yes. Absolutely.
Okay. All righty. And again, for the public's benefit, for their clarification, if, if we have extra spots available in one grade, we cannot fill them with, with applications for another grade. This is a maximum of 10 or 15 per grade. And as Mrs. Oakwist said, it's not per grade, per building. It's per grade spread among, spread out amongst the whole district. So for example, the 10 seventh graders spread among our three schools. So we're looking at adding, you know, an average of three seventh graders and three eighth graders per building in our district, and similarly to our, our elementary, our elementary students.
Can you make one more point, please?
Absolutely.
I don't believe that I mentioned this at, at the start, that these would be, these would be spots that we believe are, that we could comfortably accommodate within our existing staffing ratios. So we would not be adding any additional staffing in order to provide these seats to students.
Okay.
And we also meet the requests, we also work to accommodate the request for intra-district schools of choice transfers. That process is going on right now, and once that process is closed, then we will begin the process of out-of-district transfers.
Okay. Let me see here. Mrs. Oakwist, also, as we discussed in our committee the whole meeting, can you share with the public any, any concerns about either academics or discipline with our students that we're bringing in from out of, of the district?
Certainly. So as, as we've monitored this program over the past two years and again extended out a number of years, if you take a look at our programs like ACAT and MACAT and IB, we have found the families looking to enter Livonia Public Schools as families looking to seek outstanding educational options for their children, and also with a strong commitment to transporting their children on a daily basis. As you know, we do not provide transportation as part of this service. And so although you may make no discrimination with regard to accepting students, once they apply, if they meet the grade level criteria, we, there is a caveat with regard to students with any significant disciplinary history. So for instance, if they have been expelled or had a long-term suspension, those are factors that may be considered where you may decline enrollment of a student. And so otherwise, we have found all of our students to assimilate very, very well into our school settings, and we are so pleased they're part of our LPS family.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
And again, this is, this is a, one effort of many that's a response to our community. When we had forums a few years ago, we heard overwhelmingly that our community was asking us to seek creative outside revenue streams as opposed to cutting our programs. And by bringing, what we found is by bringing in a few additional students, we can save programs for all of our students in this manner. Any other comments or questions from the board? Seeing none, we have a motion by Mrs., Mr. Johnson, supported by Mrs. McDonald. And Mrs. Bonnefield, will you please take the role?
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mrs. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mrs. Laura?
Yes.
Mrs. Bonnefield says yes. President Burton?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. The next item on our agenda is Item 7, Reports from the Superintendent. Superintendent Oakwist?
Thank you, President Burton. We have some highlights for you to share. I'd like to first congratulate two of our students at Churchill, MSC students, who have finished within the top 100 in the Michigan Mathematics Prize Competition. So I'd like to acknowledge Livonia Churchill seniors Brandon Vanderkeef, Zachary Obsnick, who have placed within, again, within the top 100 students from across Michigan. This mathematics prize competition took place in October and December. The final placement, actually, of these students will not be known until the awards ceremony at Eastern on March 2nd, but we could not wait to share this good news with you. If we have more good news to share based on that awards ceremony, we will share that with you, and then we would like to invite these two young men to come to a board meeting to be acknowledged for their significant accomplishments. I would just like to note that Brendan and Zach are no strangers to success in this, in this prize competition. It is Zach's fifth consecutive top 100 finish, and Brendan's third consecutive top 100 finish, and fourth consecutive top 200 finish. They are both among the very best high school mathematics students in Michigan and across the United States. So congratulations to them. Congratulations to what I'm sure are their very proud parents and to their teachers. So I thank Mr. Doug Coats for sharing this information with us. I would also like to acknowledge one of our, we, as you know, we have just very, very fine coaches across our district who work well with our athletic administrators at our middle schools and high schools, and we are grateful for the time and talent that they share with our, our young athletes. Livonia Stevenson's Mr. Greg Phil has been named National High School Athletic Coach Association Coach of the Year finalist. He is one of eight national finalists for Coach of the Year. The award will be presented to Mr. Phil in June at the Galt House in Louisville, Kentucky, in which, a conference in which over 500 coaches and athletic directors will, will participate. So we'd like to congratulate Livonia Stevenson, the swimming and diving program, and Mr. Greg Phil, as he's been selected for this very, very prestigious honor. You may have noticed, in, highlighted in the newspaper, we had two Livonia teachers to be awarded $500 micro grants by a small local organization, a group called Taffy, Taking Action for Friends, Family, and Youth. It's a small grassroots family charity, has gotten into the business of supporting local teachers. So two of our teachers, Mary Rogowski from the Jackson Center, and Suzanne Sanawi from Cass Elementary, are both Livonia Public Schools teachers, and they were both provided a grant from the Taffy organization. We congratulate them. And then additionally, I know I shared with the Board of Education, but I also wanted to share with our community, that we were very pleased to see that on late Friday afternoon, US District Court Judge Omira issued an order granting preliminary injunction with regard to Public Act 269. As you know, a hearing is still pending on this. However, the gag order has been lifted on the over 108 districts who are affected right now, who have local ballot issues before the voters in, on the March election. So they are now able to continue to provide factual, accurate communication to their community with regard to the local ballot issue before them. I really wanted to commend our Board of Education, not only for their action that took place prior, just prior to the holiday, and by just, I think I mean the day before the Christmas holiday, in contacting our legislatures, our governor, our municipal partners across the street, but I believe our district was one of the first to pass a board resolution requesting the repeal of Public Act 269. That resolution has been requested by many, many local districts, and has been replicated by many boards on their own. And so I'd like to commend our board for taking action. I believe that this has made a significant impact. There's also pending legislation with regard to modification of this bill. And so I believe this is an example of collective advocacy with regard to municipal organizations, school districts, and I, again, I'd like to commend our board for being such an active advocate on behalf of the community we serve and our school district. Finally, I encourage our community to continue to support our, our student athletes, our student musicians and artists, and all of our participants in clubs and programs. I know Kappa has a performance coming up this weekend. We also have a collage concert, a triad concert at Stevenson on Thursday evening. We have many crosstown rivalry, rivalries taking place in our winter sports season. And so as you know, our students put fourth grade effort, whether it's a robotics competition, a wrestling match, or a concert and performance. So I encourage our community to support our students, to support their families as they participate in these special events throughout the district. So we look forward to attending a number of those this week, and I encourage you to do so as well. Thank you.
Thank you. The next item on our agenda is Item 8, Hearing from Board Members. And Item 8A is the First Reading of Board Policy, GAA, Non-Discrimination. Mrs. Oakwist, would you like to address this item?
Actually, I am going to have Dr. Terrell and Mr. Archibald address these.
That's fine.
Thank you, President Burton.
Thank you.
In Board Policy, GAA, it is simply a title change from Assistant Superintendent for Personnel to the Director of Human Resources.
Okay. Any questions or comments from the board on that title change? All right. Seeing none, that will go on our agenda next month as a voting item. The next item on our agenda is Item 8B, First Reading of Board Policy, JAB, Non-Discrimination on the Basis of Handicap, Section 504. And-
And again, President Burton, this is simply two title changes halfway down the page, changing the Assistant Superintendent of Human Resources to the Director of Student Services, making that change in two spots.
All righty. Any questions or comments from the board on this change? Likewise, then, this item will go on our agenda next month as a voting item. The next item is Item 8C, First Reading, First Reading of Board Policy, JGI, Suspected Student Abuse and Neglect. Dr. Terrell?
President Burton, this, the changes that we have on the policy, JGI, include the information of the department that staff would send the reported abuse to, as well as including the information for our vulnerable adults under the Social Welfare Act.
Okay. Are there any questions or comments from the board on the, on these changes? All right. Seeing none, likewise, this will go on our agenda next month as a voting item. The next item on our agenda is Item 8D, First Reading, First Reading of Board Policy, BHA, Code of Ethics. Mrs. Oakwist, would you like to address this item?
Certainly. So we bring to you this evening the revised Board of, Board Operations Code of Ethics. Again, it is a bylaw, therefore it does come before the board for a first reading and a second reading before voting. I'd like to bring to your attention changes on the back page of this under the section beginning as Board President. Under the second bullet, there were some revisions made to the verbiage included in that particular bullet with regard to the role of the Board President advising persons addressing the board to do so in a respectful manner and to not allow inappropriate communication to be directed to the Board or Superintendent during board meetings. The intent of that language is primarily the same. However, there was some wording with regard to changing "ensure" that to advise, and instead of professional, "respectful." Again, that would be the only changes recommended to the Board Code of Ethics. I'm sorry, there is one change on the first page. I apologize. I apologize. In the fourth bullet, we took out the words "up to date." It was a bit redundant because it had previously said, "so they will be current, up to date, and relevant." And so we simply took out the words "up to date," and we will just remain with the description, "current and relevant." So those are the changes that have been made. Again, this document was discussed at a board study session, followed by discussion and review at a board committee meeting. And so it, with your approval, it would go on as a first reading tonight, and then a second reading next month.
Okay. All righty. Are there any questions or comments from the Board of Education? Nope? All righty. This, seeing none, this will go on for a vote at our next voting meeting. Next item is, on our agenda is item eight E, hearing from board members. As is customary for our board, rather than having seven folks say largely the same thanks to many folks in our community, we have appointed one individual to take care of those duties for the majority of the board. As always, other board members are welcome to chime in and to add other items as they see fit. Tonight, Mrs. Laura is going to take care of hearing from board members for us. Mrs. Laura?
Thank you, President Burton. I think we'll all agree, it was a very exciting, but yet very productive, board meeting tonight. I would like to read a quote that the superintendent wrote to the board members in a memo this past week. May I?
Certainly.
Mrs. Oakwest? Thank you. Mrs. Oakwest stated that it was going to be a pleasure to start our meeting with a celebration of students, community, and staff. And boy, we just, we did just that. We celebrated students, our Emerson students, with their wonderful artistic talent, as you can see, and we thank them so much for sharing their talent with us. We appreciate you. You should be very proud of your talent. And that, if I can rename the students, Alexis Booton, Mackenzie Marsh, Madison Reynolds, Kalia Watson, and Maya Zimmerman. We honored staff today. We honored, first of all, Lori McGulick, and presented a Golden Apple Award to her, the wonderful, wonderful statements that she received, and had 10 staff members recommending her. We thank her for her dedication. She's a paraprofessional at Franklin High School, and she certainly demonstrates her genuine caring for students. And she's known by all her staff members and friends, I think it was not mentioned here, but listed in the recommendation of her wonderful, warm smile. She's a wonderful woman. We recognized our staff, our wonderful principals, by proclaiming this week Principles Week. Thank you for your hard work and your dedication. I personally can appreciate it, being in those same shoes, all the great things that you do for your, for our students. We recognized the community with a Team Effort Award today, thanking four gentlemen for supporting our industrial educational program and giving our students wonderful opportunities. And that was Chuck Duris and David Lawrence, who are from the Alpha USA, Jean Hyes from Schoolcraft College, and Dan West from the Livonia Chamber of Commerce. And then we moved on to approving many motions today. Our first one was to accept a very generous gift to Emerson. It was close to $22,000. There were 23 contributors. Mrs. Bonnefield listed each of them individually. They were made up of citizens, businesses, our two local colleges, the AM Rotary, the Chamber of Commerce, and the former mayor and the present mayor. We approved several motions under personnel matters. We'd like to welcome Patrick Meese, Special Ed Principal at the Western Wing Skill Center. He began, as Mrs. Oakwest said, his career here in Livonia. And another district took him away for a little while, but being personally involved with that other district, I can tell you, he received wonderful leadership training. So I know that he's going to be a great addition to our staff. We congratulate you and welcome. And we hired five teachers, three high school teachers, one for each of our high schools, which included two math, math teachers, one science teacher for the high schools, and we also hired a language arts middle school teacher and a speech and language teacher. Congratulations to you and welcome aboard. We're proud to have you on our team. We approved four retirements, three teachers and a cook. And as Mr. Wintery said, their years of service added up to almost 80 years. Thank you so much for your dedication and for everything that you do for LPS. We had a sympathy resolution for the Upton family, and Mrs. Oakwest spoke to that, our deepest sympathy. We appreciate all that Mr. Upton did for our district and his dedication to our students and staff. For business matters, we began by ratifying the sale of Series II bonds. We approved four motions that came from the bond funding, and it was the Avestis Abatement Project at Stevenson, the renovation of Holmes &amp; Johnson, the rebids for the renovation of Grant, Hoover, and Randolph. And we appointed a consultant from Stevenson, or for Stevenson, for the abatement project. This was all from the bond funding. And also to include the computer lab tables for the elementary computer labs. From our sinking fund, we approved the demolition of McKinley. And from the GSRP grant, we approved the purchase of Playscapes Structures for Garfield and Rosedale. And lastly, under business, we approved the continuation of our limited schools of choice program for the 2016-17 school year. We also had a first reading for a number of board policies, which include non-discrimination and suspected child abuse and neglect, and also our board code of ethics. And I think that summarized President Burton tonight's meeting.
Sure did. We were busy.
Yeah, we were. Good meeting.
Are there other board members who would like to be heard from this evening? Mrs. Jarvis?
Thank you, President Burton. I'd like to give a shout-out to the Frost Math Club. Those students at Frost Middle School who participated in the math club recently sent a team of 10 students to compete in the middle school math counts competition over at University of Michigan Dearborn. This team placed fifth out of the 19 teams there. Many of those teams come from schools where math counts is considered a class, and they have it every day, as well as on Saturdays in some cases. Our kids meet once a week. So that tells you something about the caliber of these students. They're amazing. So kudos to them.
Congratulations. Are there, are there any other board members who would like to add anything?
Seeing none, I have just one item I would like to add. Many, many folks in our district do an awful lot of work, and occasionally, we have an opportunity to recognize some of them. And occasionally, that comes on a statewide basis. This Board of Education was presented with an opportunity to nominate our school business official for school business, Michigan School Business Official of the Year, and we were oh so happy to do so. Lisa Abbey has been nominated by many members of this Board of Education for the Michigan School Business Official of the Year. And in citing rationale and reasons, it was easy, the only part that was difficult was fitting it in the number of lines that were allotted. Most folks outside of our district might not realize that Lisa Abbey takes care of the business of the district, which is, is correct, and it falls under her guidance, and there's no doubt about that. However, in recent years, as our staff has shrunk in all areas of the district, it has shrunk in cabinet also. And Ms. Abbey has taken on the duties of overseeing all the building and grounds, which then incorporated the sinking fund, and with the blessing of our district, it then incorporated $195 million bond. So in addition to the regular day-to-day operations of our whole district in terms of all the finances, all of that bond work falls, at least in part, if not, if not in a whole, under, under Lisa Abbey's hat. You have gone above and beyond a school business official, and we are so grateful to have you working with Livonia Public Schools, and we hope you stay here for a really long time.
My pleasure. Thank you very much.
You're very welcome. So it is my hope that the state of Michigan agrees with us. So we'll find out in a couple of months about the answer to that one.
It's nice, it's nice to hear it from you. Thank you very much.
You're very welcome.
Appreciate it.
Very appreciated. And it's nice to have an opportunity like that, that presents itself, so. Are there any other comments or questions from board members? All righty. The last item on our agenda this evening is recess to close session for the superintendent's mid-year evaluation. May I have a motion, please?
President Burton?
Mrs. McDonnell?
Move that the Board of Education of Livonia Public School School District recess to close session for the purpose of superintendent's evaluation.
Support.
We have a motion by Mrs. McDonnell, supported by Mr. Centers. Are there any questions or comments on this item? Seeing none, Mrs. Bonnefield, will you please take the roll?
Mrs. McDonnell?
Yes.
Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mrs. Laura?
Yes.
Mrs. Bonnefield says, yes. President Burton?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. As I stated earlier in the meeting, this is a mid-year evaluation, so the board will not be reporting out on this. Therefore, we, the reporting out comes after the June final evaluation of the year. Since we will not, since we will not be reporting out on it, we will not be coming back on television at the end of this meeting. So if you're watching from home, your meeting is concluded at this time. Thank you very much. We are now at recess.